We're ready to start. Okay, let me call this meeting to order. This is a February ninth, two thousand fifteen Mastoni Planning Commission meeting. May I have a roll call, please, Janelle?
Mayor Peta?
Here.
Mr. Angel?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. Poser?
Here.
Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Okay, first of all, before we do anything, I'd like to welcome this ring from all of us. We look forward to working with you. We have good staff, so if you have any questions, make sure that we get them answered for you. The first thing on the agenda this evening is Antonio's Pizza for a proposed wall sign. Do we have a rep here? Come on, Doc.
Yes.
Do you have a card?
Importantly, you have food stuff.
Yeah, pizza. Yeah, that's what we really wanted.
Hopefully, we'll be there soon.
Okay, yeah. All right, we've heard a lot about good things about you guys coming there. So seeing that you're the man who does the sign, we're pretty excited you're that close, that almost having a pizza. All right, we have some comments from our planner, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Report dated January fourth, two thousand fifteen. The applicant is requesting about a three point two five by eleven point seven five foot sign, which is just under, slightly over thirty eight square feet, under forty square feet. A wall sign for their tenant space located at four sixty-three East Aurora Road. Section eleven seventy-nine oh three F two of the planning zoning code permits two square feet of identification signage for each lineal foot of building frontage. The tenant's frontage in this case is twenty feet, so they're provided forty square feet of signage. Therefore, the thirty eight point one nine square foot approximate, square foot sign complies with the limitations. And I just provided you with a note in my report that details what's been approved to date. And with this, Planning Commission approves this, the total square footage approved for this particular plaza is just, just over two hundred and forty-seven square feet, and their allowable square footage is about five hundred and eighty-five. So they're, they're moving along pretty good, and there's a few spaces still requiring approval, but don't foresee any issue at this point. And recommend this be approved at this time.
All right, Janelle, are there any other comments from anybody? All right, any comments, questions from the commission? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Have a motion to approve?
Second, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Both?
Okay, thank you very much.
Let's get him going. All right, see you. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is another sign for an addition to some point, I'm sorry, site plan. It's site, it's not sign. We need to get the lines of kind of blends. Proposed site plan for approval. Hi. How are you?
I'm fine. Mike Nipollis on the architect for Capital Senior.
Great. Do you have a card like that I could have?
Sure.
Yeah. No, the one relating to this, not all the others. I've probably got one for private protection.
Sure.
Even here for Janelle, I just want to make sure she's got her.
Thank you.
All right, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a report dated February first, two thousand fifteen regarding the proposed building addition. The proposed addition looks to expand the existing facility by about an additional fifteen thousand one hundred and seventy square feet. This will include sixteen new residential units with focus on memory care. Subject site is Zoned RSC, which is Senior Citizen Residential, and long-term care facilities, including assisted living facilities, are conditionally permitted, subject to the requirements of section eleven thirty-seven point oh four of the code. I have a note here regarding the additional approval. Planning Commission did approve this project some time ago for, conditionally approved it for the main facility. This proposal does look to expand the facility by including memory care. So there's an, in the code, the way it's written, an expansion such as this would require going back through the conditional zoning certificate process with a public hearing pursuant to eleven thirty-seven oh four of the code. However, there is an exemption process that's in the, in the code, and that's, if the commission has their code in front, in front of them, it's eleven thirty-seven oh four G four, and I can read that for the commission's sake. It states, "The activities hereby conditionally authorized on the subject land shall not be expanded beyond the present scope, i.e., no expansion of the facilities or programs herein authorized shall take place on the premise unless the Planning Commission expressly determines that such expansion does not materially alter the scope, character, or quantity of the authorized activity." Just based on my review of this, I don't believe that it does alter the scope, but that's, that's something the Planning Commission would need to make a determination. Again, if they determine it does not materially alter the scope, then this project can move forward with a site plan review and approval. If the commission did, then the conditional zoning certificate process would need to, need to occur. With regard to my review of the site plan itself, I have some bulleted points, all fairly minor issues. I just note that essentially the parking that's being proposed in addition to, with, with regard to the addition being proposed complies with the code. The building height and the setbacks comply with the code. The only thing just noted missing on the plan, typically we have information about lighting levels, any sort of new lighting that's associated with the building expansion. When the applicant comes back for a final approval, would want to note that on the, on the site plan with, with some photometrics documenting that. Typically, the Planning Commission uses one foot candle at non-residential property lines and a half foot candle at residential. There's an existing wrought iron, wrought iron fence along the rear of the existing building. This, it's not clear whether all or some of that wrought iron fence is being removed, and if any is going to be put back up or continued along the back of the building. Something that I thought should be under consideration, and if it is going to be expanded or continued along the back, then a spec should be included on the final plans. And with regarding to sheet L one-ten, which is the landscaping, the plan does continue the theme of the original landscape design, but in my opinion, could use some additional deciduous and coniferous trees along the front of the building addition that's oriented sort of toward the main entrance of the site. So, and toward the expanded parking lot. I suggest at least three more deciduous and three more pines be added, spaced approximately twelve to fifteen feet on center. Fairly minor, but would be a nice addition, I think, to, to the front of the building. And then just suggested that the, regarding the architecture, does show how it blends in with the existing building facade, and recommended that the city architect review it for compliance with the town center district, and I think he's done that and opined in a, in a separate memo. So the, my recommendation, the site plan is fairly detailed and substantially complies with the requirements of the code. The issues are really minor and can be documented on a final site plan submitted. Would recommend at this time that it be approved, subject to the items noted in this report. And then, of course, looking for some direction from the commission regarding the expansion of the conditional zoning certificate. Again, if the commission believes that it does not materially alter the scope, character, and quantity as previously authorized, then this project can move forward without additional public hearings. And if it does feel that it doesn't comply with that section, then you would need to have a public hearing.
Thank you, Brian. Dennis?
The plans that were submitted indicate that brick roof shingles and trim will match the existing building materials, so there's no problem there. The window style, brick window heads and brick sills also match the design elements of the existing building. The existing building has hip roofs over the entire structure, and the addition is mostly hip roofs with three partial gables. I'd like to see if you could get rid of those partial gables and have it all hip roofs.
I wrestled with that one.
I think I found a solution for it.
Oh, all ears.
Sure. That's it.
Okay. Anything from engineer?
I have reviewed the engineering plans submitted for this specific project and not for the following for the commission's consideration. Existing sign demolition plan, sheet two of nine, preparing zone exists along the southeast property line. Proposed improvements do not affect their preparing zone. Dramatic plan, sheet three of nine, parking stall dimensions are consistent with copa apartments. Proposed grading plan, sheet four of nine, proposed walk-in pergrants shall be AIGIC compliant. Proposed utility plan, sheet five of nine, hydrants shall meet the same standards and match hydrants existing within the city as of grid size and type and color. Hydrants shall be in compliance with CO thirteen sixty-five seventeen. Minimum vertical clearance required between new water main and existing storm sewer is eighteen inches.
Thank you.
SWP three plan, sheet eight and nine of nine, this plan is in compliance with CO nine twenty-three regarding erosion sediment control and post-construction water quality. SSWCD has also reviewed and approved the SWP three for requirements of CO nine twenty-three. Engineering plan approval is recommended. Any items identified above that require a resolution can be forwarded with the applicant prior to issuance of any permits. I'm available for further discussion at the planning commission's office.
Good job. I almost left out all that good stuff at the end.
All the acronyms.
All right, any questions from the commission? Do you have some to dot? Oh, that's right, I saw it. Okay, go ahead.
During, they listed on the demo section of the sheet that they're going to pick out that, that exit on the east end. So there has to be some thought given to making some kind of a temporary exit. That building has no center stairwell. It is to the exact foot from the elevators to the exit. So you cannot compromise those exit on that east end. You'll have to make, so when they draw up some construction plans, we're going to have to make sure that you come up with some kind of an exit during construction.
Okay.
Do you have a copy of that?
I did get a copy of all the reports and email when I read them.
All right.
Appreciate that.
All right, now, any questions, comments from the commission?
I'm right here with people with dementia, all faces of dementia. Three hundred people, residents in this building that have dementia, but what they want to do is develop a facility that's more designed to their needs. I can explain some of the design if you know what's going on here. This wing here is the addition. Here's the existing building, three-story building that comes out, and we're going to kind of come into the east end of it. This will all be a single-story building. It'll have internal courtyard with some glass walls. One of the things with memory care, people like to wander around quite a bit. They like to be outdoors and exposed to sunlight, so we do that kind of a safe environment right within the building. And the rooms are fairly modest, but then again, that's another feature that is intentional. Better than not over-stimulate people with dementia. And so we've taken a lot of the interior design into account, and so this, this will be a building that's designed more to care closer for, in order to care residents.
So operationally, I mean, there's people living in there similar to there is in the rest of the building.
Yeah.
It's not, there's no patient there, I should, yes, it's people living there, it's just desirable differently, and cares slightly differently, it's not causing warship, it's not causing commercial disturbance.
It's basically the same as the assisted living hall.
How many potential additional employees would have?
I'd have to defer to the people that run the program, but I think it's, I think it does, so. A lot of the kitchen staff and everything will be feeding into that addition. There's a small warming kitchen within the program, but it's really, the main, the main kitchen's been handled, we scanned a little bit of their food storage, you're going to have to have extra capacity. Right now, the kitchen's south, so we're removing the wall, added residents.
All right. Any other questions? Comments? All right, well, maybe we can start with the, the public hearing portion and give a decision on that, seeing as this is, facility's been there and been operating, and I don't recall ever having any complaints. I don't know if a public hearing would really be necessary.
It doesn't sound like it's really that much different.
No.
Now, if I remember research, if I'm correct, when this initial building was built and they submitted their initial plans, the footprint for this was included in that at that time, and that's why the parking and so forth was played out the way it was, to accommodate this addition at that, at that time of the initial building was built. So now, see that it would be necessary for that.
I'm good with it.
All right, then let's put it to a vote. Can I have a motion, please? Brian, could you state that so we will know as we sit down?
Sure. The motion would read that Planning Commission, in utilizing their authority under section eleven thirty-seven point oh four G four, finds that the expansion does not materially alter the scope, character, and quantity of the already authorized activities.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? All right, now, moving on to any other questions or comments regarding the construction? Dennis, you're going to work with them. You have no problem complying with what's in here as far as landscaping plan? Are you good with that, Mike?
Yeah, we could add the half a dozen trees that you suggested.
All right, so we will make this conditional, but the lighting plan or landscaping plan be addressed. Anything else?
The fencing, wire fencing, you want to clarify? That wrought iron fencing is around an existing, like a day room, and it's going to remain in place right where it is, and has no impact on the addition.
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, can I get a motion?
I thought we booted on it already.
No, that was just that one section. Okay, sorry.
So we have trees, the architectural design, Dennis?
The lighting?
The lighting.
All those things will be conditional that they be done for this to be retained. So your motion is that we pass?
We approve based on architectural, electrical, landscaping.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Both? Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Thank you.
Next, we have the proposed wall sign at unit three hundred.
Aye.
Well, thanks for providing that card. All right, do we have, from the planner, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Report dated February second, two thousand fifteen. Same plaza that we dealt with as our first agenda item this evening for four sixty-three East Aurora, another tenant space, they're proposing a sign for eighteen T. And there's three elements to the sign, and the total area of those three elements is thirty-two point five five square feet pursuant to the code. With the tenant frontage being forty square, or forty feet, the total square footage for this particular tenant space is eighty square feet, that's allowable. Therefore, the thirty-two point five five square foot sign is compliant and can be approved at this time. Doing some quick math, based on the other report for Antonio's Pizza, two hundred and forty-seven point one zero square feet have been approved, and with this thirty-two point five five, we're just under two hundred and eighty square feet approved for this plaza. And again, they seem to be on track with hitting their target number and staying below their five eighty-five that's approvable.
All right, are there any other comments? No? How about from the commission? Anybody have any comments, questions?
Yeah, that, so that, that existing ground monument sign's already been approved by the commission. As long as that tenant panel appears to fit just fine into it, it's, it's no issue.
Okay, so you're all good with everything? Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you go. Absolutely. See you next time.
Thank you, Brian.
Another sign, proposed wall sign for the sports academy at four twenty East Highland. Do we have someone here? Yes, sir.
Sorry, I have a card that we had all good.
I, okay. Well, we do that to make sure in case Janelle needs information, she has it, so she has your information.
I think I've seen you several times coming to that area.
Yeah, well, just so she has. All right, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, report dated February second, two thousand fifteen. The subject site is four twenty East Highland, unit one, and they're looking to add a wall sign onto the space and then increase the area of an existing ground monument sign in front of the building. The wall sign being proposed is a five by ten sign or fifty square feet, and the increase to the existing sign will have two, two tenant panels on it, and those tenant panels, the one for the combat sports academy is about ten point one three square feet, and then the other business is about four point four square feet. At the, at the time of this report, some of this information that I'm about to tell you was unknown, but I was provided with an email this evening that points out some of the, the comments that I have in my report. So again, the code allows for two square feet of identification for each lineal foot of building frontage. I noted that that information wasn't provided at this time, but in this email dated today, it looks like the, the building frontage is about sixty feet of frontage.
Fifty feet is what the county records had, yeah.
Sixty feet, which would entitle them to about a hundred and twenty square feet of wall signage, and this being a fifty square foot wall sign, that's certainly well within limits. It's my understanding from talking to Mr. Sax that this is the only wall sign on the building.
That's correct.
So they have seventy square feet approximately for other tenants that may go in there, so it seems acceptable. Regarding the, the ground monument sign, the code allows for a forty square foot ground monument sign, and then the setback has to be equal to the height of the sign or at least five feet, whichever is greater. Again, no information at the time the review was completed, but it's documented in this email. It looks like the, the ground sign is, says, it says it's seven by eight or fifty-six square feet, but Mr. Sax actually pulled out the original approval for that, for that sign, and he calculated using the code, the definitions in the code to calculate area based on different geometric shapes. He calculated the total area, including the two new panels, tenant panels, on that ground monument sign to being thirty-seven square feet, which is below the forty square feet permissible by code. So if that's the case, that's, that's acceptable as well. So given this, in light of this new information, provided this is all correct, and I think the building department can double back, if the planning commission finds that acceptable to, to confirm these numbers, then the signage being proposed is compliant with the code. And it sounds like the setback of the existing sign is acceptable as well, but we'd want to confirm that with the applicant, that it's at least setbacks seven, eight feet from the road right away.
Okay. I'll double check it. We're working off the existing sign that was up you, you placed or something at one time, so I'm just, I'm just working right on that.
Yeah.
That was at the code back then, it was, you know, built in seventy-eight, I don't know, we can double check. And I guess the whole building will have to deal with that, because there's other signs that are in that, that are going to be coming too. Not for me.
Anybody else, Janelle? All right, any questions, comments from the commission? We would make this conditional, that, that sign be addressed, all right? So we can have approval with that condition right on the approval. Anybody like to make a motion?
See, a question, so whatever that was on that sign before is not in there anymore?
No, it's just empty out there, like the blue and white sign.
Is it, like, a big, a big, a sign here?
Yeah, it's still there. It's still there. It's all centered, we're just working on the same sign. In fact, there's a guy in the back that has a fertilizer company who wants that top spot, so I just, I don't care. That's why I wanted a building one, because we're really the biggest part of the network.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Do I have a conditional motion?
Motion approval, conditions, though, that just a couple things they verified.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both? There you go, good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, see you. Well, they're going to file you in building.
Yeah.
So when you walk in.
Thank you.
Sure enough, see you. Next, we have a proposed replat of the common area at one oh four seven. Thank you. All right, how are you? All right, do we have your names? I see Kristi.
She's going to be the new house that's going to be built there.
All right.
She's a family development.
Okay.
Fox, sorry, Ken, when we originally did this, thirteen years ago, it was planted for nine houses. None of the other families, she, all of a sudden sold her house in September, and she decided she wanted, it was common area, because like it was fine, and we didn't want that one, so.
All right.
And we just want to put it back into the development, whatever, put a house on it.
Sure. All right, Patty, let's hear what the planner says. Brian?
Well, I think we should have kept the pizza guy here, so he knew.
Then you could know where to find him. She's going to be the easiest one, it's on her down right hand side, it'll be the only house.
So this, my report dated February third, this is, this, this property was actually, the subject property we're talking about was actually replanted about a year ago in March, in fact, of two thousand fourteen, and it was a developable lot, an approved planted lot that was replanted along with lot seven, I believe, back into common open space. And Planning Commission approved that, it got replanted. And the planning commissioner approved that, it got replatted, I'm assuming it was recorded and replatted back through Summit County. And now, as you hear from the applicant, they're back here today, and it sounds like a family member wants to build on that. And so they want to take it back out of the common open space that we put it into about a year ago, and make it another developable lot, which it was previously, so they're not increasing their density. There's no issue there with regard to the density, it was already approved for a lot that could be built on. So I really see no, no issue with this. I am just curious, is there a homeowners association?
It's all family. Yes, it is.
That could be, that could be one of the worst homeowners associations.
So, yeah, we're all fine with it, so.
Yeah, so you just have to file those, those documents at the county recorder's office in identifying that it's going out of common open space and back into a developable lot. But other than that, as long as the plating procedure is followed, which they're here this evening doing that, I see no issue with this being approved and replatted back into a, a buildable lot.
As you go through the permitting process, you'll be asked to sign it's homeowners association to, just saying it's okay.
I would say, well, she has a builder, and that, that, that's her, he could come visit me and want it signed, and I'll be happy.
That's, that's what will be necessary, just so you're aware, that's how important it is.
As long as people tell me, we'll be sure.
Okay, now, any other questions? Or do you have a report? Okay, go ahead.
I reviewed the replat for Cheloeterra, Sub-Lot One dash R. This lot was converted to common area last year, current request is to convert the lot back to a developable lot. Engineering has no problem with the current request, the platte page one should be a signature line and statement providing approval of the homeowners association. Approval, approval of the request, replat is recommended. If replat is approved by the commission, recording of the platte shall be in accordance with CO eleven thirteen oh seven. I am available for approved discussion at the commission's request.
Okay, that's good stuff. Anything else, any questions, comments? Are you gonna be a new resident, are you living here already?
I already live here, and I work here, and I'm gonna live here for much longer now.
Okay. Okay, well, she'll be living close.
Yeah, she lived close before, but she lived on Skyland. She backed up to our property before that, so.
Well, no, that's a good thing to know, we have to know that to put it in there.
I'm looking to grow with the community.
There you go, there you go. Are there any, do I have, oh, yes, yes.
Are you allowed to say anything?
Sure, absolutely, just state who you are.
Yes, I am Donna Ambiel Mygowski, my husband Hank. Our house has been in our family for over forty years, and our carpeting line is right up against this lot. And we are experiencing, from the street that was put in, the lot was kind of mushy, it's never really dried. So we have a concern about putting this back into buildable lot, because you're going to put the water dispersed off of home itself, and it's going to come to our lot, which is flat. So our concern is, we're gonna swamp out that there, and we wanna know what we do about getting the water to make sure it diverts from our carpeting.
Well, that's a very good question, and one that's asked a lot. And as they go to and present plans, you heard an engineer's report where he doesn't have a problem with it yet. But when it gets into the elevation of the house, how the land should be sculpted, they're very, very cautious about, number one, building a home that'll flood, never, ever will Matt Stone do that again, because that's happened in the past. And number two, concerned for the neighbors to make sure there's swales, drainage, that type of thing. There is a big concern today with stormwater, it's a big issue, big issue. So at this point in time, we're okaying that it be considered more or less to put a house on it. But before that house is built, it has to get the permits, it has to get all the drawings okayed. And these people know their business, that work for the city, as to if you're going to have a problem. If you're gonna have a problem, then that would be a problem, the house would not permit it.
That road was never added, that road was existing when your parents, because I know your mom, trust me, your mom was the first person who came down to introduce herself.
There were drain ditches that were...
Right, there was a ditch right alongside it, but there isn't one there now.
There isn't one now, you have, you have your trees and that.
Those weren't our trees, those trees have been there from day one, we've never put those in.
Whoever put the street in did.
No, those were their trees. Those pine trees, that whole thing, when you come in that road, those were their existing land from the, the Rittenhour family that owned that. We didn't change any of that.
The point was that the, the street was put in, it was not that high before, or however it got locked, our, our property now, even now, we just put a shadow on our property, and we could not put it in place, because in the middle of winter, we're still wet, and the truck got stuck. So we're in a bad position, and a concern on this side, and now it'll be on the backside, so you'll frame in the whole backyard plus. So I'm just putting that out there, I'm concerned about it.
And that's, this is the time to do it, right now, in the early stages, instead of shut it, or cut it out later. So that's good, it's key to meeting and spoken fees, because now everybody's aware, we gotta make sure that they don't have a problem.
I know, we get, my backyard from Skyland, we get, because we have sewers, we put the sewers in when we built the roads to build the houses. We get all the wash off from Skyland down on Cheloeterra. You can't even walk to my backyard directly behind my house, unless I'm gonna hand dig that up and put drain tile individually out there to soak more of the water up, because all their stuff comes down and across us.
They call it impervious surface, impervious surfaces like this thing. And the more you build, you have more roofs which are like this, you have more roads which are always, so that will be a factor. So now it's all out in the open, everybody's talking about it. But right now, we're concerned with the proposed replat this evening, so do I have any other comments or questions from commissioners? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Make a motion, Chris.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, good luck to you, I hope it all works out, and I hope all your problems are addressed, stay in touch. Boy, if we could just dry up the yards.
He was trying to, but he didn't do more.
By the last ten years, it's been...
Yeah. Okay, is there any other business to talk this evening?
Well, I, I would like, I would like to ask, um...
Come on down, come on down, talk.
It's not formal, it's just here, formal, but where are the residents of, representing the residents of South Echo Road?
Sure enough.
You might be familiar with our situation?
Yes.
Okay, we had submitted a package to, I believe, the planning commission for the zoning garage of several other people's in the hall, regarding what we had determined as far as zoning use for the parcel that the South facility wants to build on. We haven't heard anything, so.
Well, let me tell you what's been happening in the meantime. The noise you made was heard, okay, and absolutely had an effect, whether that'll be their build or not. So I need some input from the residents anyway, because as I'm hearing it, I, it doesn't come through my office directly, but it comes to me when we're having a cup of coffee and talking, that they are coming back to the building department, and they will build this building, so it will not need a variance.
What about the zoning issue?
Well, the, the zoning and use, the problem was that it needed a variance, all right?
The zoning is LI?
Yes.
And they're trying to put a facility that was equal to a E three in use?
Well, here's the management senate experts.
Yeah, not private use, but public use.
Right, this is, they, they wanted to turn it into a public use facility, which does not fit under an LI zoning code from our research. So do you find that otherwise?
Yeah, so the distinction between private and public is a public facility owned by a municipality in this case, or another public entity. The private recreational facility is an entity, a private, an entity that is private, not publicly owned, and has a facility that is for private use, whether they use it for leads or whatever, that's, that's part of a private use. In terms of the permitted uses of the code, I do think that private recreation facilities, indoor and outdoor, are permitted use in that district. And I think that the proposal does fall under that category.
But they would be renting out the space?
That may be, I mean, that's not something...
So that is no longer private, that is public, when it, when it's rented for profit?
I think they're talking ownership, I mean, it's the way I'm reading it, which may differ from what you're reading. But is it owned publicly, or is it owned privately, is it owned by the city right now? Yeah, apart, or trustee, all right, but they will be buying and purchasing the property as a private entity? It will come back to planning, so your input is still welcome. I have a question for you. The builder came to me and said, Mayor, we are going to build this, so no variance is needed. This will be at a great expense, because they're gonna have to dig down and lower the building.
I just want you to note the water table's at twenty-one feet, and they will be into the water if they go over twenty-one feet.
Well, what, whatever they're going to do will be where there is no variance needed. I was told by the owner that at the meeting where the public was invited to come in, and they talked to you, that the, the homeowners there actually said yes to, they would accept it if it's in compliance and requires no variances. Did I, am I getting that properly from him?
It could work at thirty-five feet heights, that's what we agreed to, not, not to this average of side walls and so forth. It's got, to us, the top of the roof ridge is the height of the building.
Yes.
So that's seventy feet, not this average of the side walls and the deaves and all this other stuff. And whether that's written in the codes, I, I'm not sure, as far as that's a...
They're not doing, they're, they're, they're not proposing to do that anymore, it's not gonna be seventy feet tall.
Oh, well, they, in that meeting, they said if they can't do seventy feet, they're not gonna build, that's what they...
I, I wasn't at that meeting, but they've since come back, I mean, I attended a meeting last week, and they've since come back, and they're, they're adhering to the thirty-five foot height requirement.
Oh, for the, the phase two as well?
The, I, right now, there's no phase two, they're just, they're looking at just an initial building, so I don't, I don't know where, where a future phase may or may not be. But right now, they're proposing a building that would be compliant with our thirty-five foot height requirement.
Yes, we knew phase one was wanting to, it's the phase two, that is four hundred and fifty feet long, and they want it to be seventy feet, so that is true.
No, it will not be, that's, that's what I'm telling you, definitively, they told me specifically, it will not be seventy feet, it will not need a variance, which means it will be built to the height limit.
So phase one and phase two?
Phase one was something they wanted to have done by November, it's February, so they missed that, all right? So now they're just going ahead and building it all, phase one and phase two become total job. And what we've heard to this point is that they will be in compliance, all right? Or they won't get past the planning commission, because the planning commission has no choice but to send it to VZA. If it exceeds anything, it needs a variance. So if it doesn't need a variance, it could very well be approved.
Okay, so your, your understanding of the use for an LI, it covers public use of a private facility?
Yeah, I mean, quite frankly, I'll be honest with you, it doesn't matter whether it's public or private. I mean, really, we should look at, as a city, we should look at really many of the language of our code. The, the reality is, it's, it's a, it's a recreational facility, and that carries impacts. And in this case, the, the city believes that those impacts are such that it should be a permitted use. Public or private, really, quite frankly, is irrelevant. So, but in this case, it does specifically state private recreational facilities, and the term private, I believe in this case, refers to private ownership versus public ownership, because the way you, when you, when you see zoning codes, if you see public buildings and utilities, it refers to publicly owned, like a government agency, versus a privately owned facility.
Yeah, but it says public use, public use.
I think, I think...
Well, we're not done yet, it will, it, it has not come back to planning, it has not even been produced in reality. So far, it's just been talked, all right?
Well, this is an update that we have not heard.
Okay, so that's good.
That they tend to comply with the zoning, that's something entirely new we have not heard. I, I guess the, we had submitted our documents, you know, over three weeks ago, and, and we were wondering why it wasn't on the agenda. I guess because you have not received these weeks in a row.
Correct, correct.
I, I would have thought somebody would have contacted us and said, you know, we're, we're working on this, or what the update was.
Well, I'm sorry, if you were expecting that, but I, I wasn't aware you were expecting an answer to that. I thought you were just laying what your input was, which is considered.
He's done a lot of research.
On the use, because it doesn't have to do really with who owns it, it has to do with, to do with how it's used. In other words, can you put a car wash there, can you, can you do this or that? And in LI, they talk about private recreation facility, and if you look up private recreation facility, all of the research that I've done shows that it would be something like, with a homeowners association, you have a swimming pool, that could be the outdoor, and you can have a place to play cards, that's an indoor. And then the other thing would be a club, and the club would have to have a clear, bona fide membership. And in the California case that they brought up, I couldn't find one in Ohio, but that just means that it never came up in, to discipline score. Nobody ever gave a sign for state.
Well, to my knowledge, all right, this hasn't been reviewed by the law department, because usually, as this goes through, it's all done through building, planning, engineering, all right? So you're bringing up a point now that I don't think has been considered yet by our law department. Do you want me to refer that, or do you want to prepare something that would answer that specifically?
I mean, I think that it sounds like, you know, the, the homeowners are contesting the legality of whether or not a private recreational facility is indeed what's being proposed.
Yes, that is exactly right.
And so it sounds like that would be something, if you were okay with that, it'd be something that the law department would opine on.
Do you have a summary with you that I put forward to, was this your own copy?
No.
Everybody in oral, okay, well, I'm keeping this one tonight, so that tomorrow I will have all of this copied and filed, sent over to the law department as a point that must be considered as we're moving forward.
Right, because, in fact, in California cases, it clearly states a private recreation facility cannot be rented out. It has to be reclassified, and they can use it bona fide, so that it's not a phony membership, oh, you can join for today.
Well, I gotta give you credit, you went through a lot of trouble and did a lot of research, which is better than saying just because.
Well, here's, here's the thing, if, if it's an LI zone, and it is not to be used publicly, then they are wasting their time.
Yeah, that's kind of, that's, that's why, it shouldn't wait until it gets here, and that's why, you know, I put copies around the desk. No one is considering the use, and the use, again, private is, again, for, I, I used to live in Lexington, Strongfield, we had the swimming pool and, you know, the rec facility, but we could not, we had a couple passes for guests, but beyond that, they had to be a member of it.
Well, I see the point.
That's what they're referring to, so, private.
Let me answer this, yes?
Yes. Yes, I, I, well, I will wait if you have anything you want to bring to it.
Right, but I will do that now. This is it, right here, I mean, if we can pass this hurdle because they will be coming before planning again.
Right.
All right, and you should have represented this here so you see what they're presenting.
Right.
And hear what's being said. All right, so they will be coming here again, we're gonna, I'm gonna take this tomorrow, have an answer, all right, that will get to you from the law department. And the concern is whether this is private or public, and I understand-
Not ownership, use. In other words, private use means a homeowners association or a modified club, membership. And, and a public or commercial use would be if you rent it out and generate an income. And it doesn't matter whether you're a nonprofit or you're a profit, that, that actually is irrelevant. It's how it's, it's how it's used and how it's maintained and, uh-
Well, you're very much entitled to that opinion and let us do a little bit of research with our law department because here we're all gonna say, sounds good to us, but now we got, well, you know, it's such a legal- we have to be almost in between the buyer and the homeowners. And that's not a very comfortable position sometimes, all right? Because the buyer has the right to buy and do what he wants to do, provided it's within the law and the zone.
Absolutely, that's, we agree with that. But the LI zoning, what does that protect a resident that is abutting that property?
And then if you look on-
You're actually describing a B three.
We are going to get you an answer to public or private use and it's good that you came here because then it isn't the night that they're here and all of a sudden we have.
Yeah, they're wasting their time.
They're wasting their time, it's true.
They are not able to use it.
And the thing, thing that concerns us isn't bringing in the kids from a religious group, but they very clearly stated in the July twenty-first meeting that with the phase two, they intend to rent it out for things, other, for other sporting events in addition to soccer and, and then they gave the model as ultimate. Well, I studied ultimate. And ultimate, first of all, they have something going on, starting at nine-thirty every night, twelve nights a week. They have, yeah, seven nights a week, twelve nights a week. Yeah, and they also have, they rent it out for every convention. You know, anybody's got money, they'll rent it out. And they have it posted there, hourly rate. So the thing that concerns us is there's no control over what, what's gonna be back there. And if they have the ability to freely rent it out, which they actually brought that up at the July twenty-first meeting, that, I mean, you know, and fifty, the parking is fifty, three hundred and fifty parking spaces, fifty feet off the back end of our property.
There's gonna be a lot of changes addressing all of the problems that you brought forward. That's what I've been told. Do we have anything in black and white?
I have. But the use, frankly, the use concerns me as much as the size.
All right, and very fair, and now we have something we can work off of. And you spent a little bit of the time here with us tonight explaining it very nicely, thank you.
Nice to see you.
And if anybody has any questions, I think I'm, you know, I'm burning bottles.
What we'll do is, the, the planning commission will be made aware the minute I get anything from law, all right? And I'll make sure that the minute I get anything, it goes to Sonia so you get it handed to you, right, and you're handled without having to worry about me taking time to send it and forget it.
Right.
All right?
And frankly, it's a little difficult to research because there aren't a lot of cases that have been specific to that in Ohio. But there are in other, in other states. And typically, you know, what the courts do is if they don't have it, they look at what the other states that have got it, you know. They're saying that's pretty much how the law works.
He knows that stuff, that's language. Yes, all right, we'll do that for you.
All right, I appreciate that.
All right, sure, thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other business? Hearing none, do I have motion to adjourn? Do I have second?
Second.
And we're gonna go with that, we're adjourned for this evening instead of a roll call. Otherwise, somebody could scream and don't adjourn.